Conley Independence School District to order, but the record showed that a core removal of Mr. President. This meeting has been duly called and the notice and meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act. Thanks Governor Coach after five moments. First item.
You have, please join us in the stand for the invitation given by this happy caller, followed by a question.
Thank you for the standing. We thank you for the privilege of directing this wonderful school district. Every student, staff, and family member associated with this district, we ask your protection and your blessing going forward. We ask these things in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Our next item on the agenda is our recognition portion of the board meeting. So, we are going to begin with our student, teacher, and employee recognition. So if I can have Ms. Garrett come up and present her primary student of the month, students of the month, and her primary teacher and employees of the month.
Okay. We will start with Ms. Brenn Carey. She wants to come on that first. She is our second grade student of the month. She is in Mr. Aubrey's class. She likes what she likes about school. She likes to learn. She wants to be a singer or a dancer when she grows up. I'm sorry, sweetie. Her favorite subject is math. Her role models are Mr. O, her parents, and her doctor. And if there was anything she wanted to change about school, she said nothing. So, things must be good. (laughter) (applause) Come on up. He is in Ms. Ammons' class. His favorite color is teal. He has two brothers and two sisters. His favorite book is Fly Guy. He likes a lot of fun things at school. He likes to learn. He wants to be a scientist when he grows up. His favorite subject is math, and he thought he got picked for student of the month because he's been good. And his role model is his older sister because she's so nice.[192.56][192.56](laughter) Do you want to take a picture? Okay.
One more.
Next, we'll have Ms. Carey. She's our second grade teacher of the month.[231.12][231.12](applause) She, this is her fourth year at Conley. She is a master designated teacher. She, her coworkers said that she is a true team player. She really cares about her students. She's very helpful to other teachers. She always has her smile on her face. She does. And she spreads kindness like confetti. And she's an asset to our campus and team, and she's always willing to lean to help others. And she's also helping with our sunshine committee, so she's been very helpful this year. Congratulations.[264.64][264.64](applause) And then our employee of the month is Ms. Egypt Johnson. Come on up.[282.88][282.88](applause) We acquired her this year as a care professional, and she's been helping out in PE, but right now she's being our nurse and doing a really good job. She knows she's going to get stuck in that position, but she's doing so awesome. And her coworkers say that she gives every kid love and makes them feel welcome. She always has a smile on her face and always brings positivity to our school. She's real willing to help out in any way she can. And even with the busy schedule, she always has a smile. So, we're very, we appreciate her a lot. We appreciate it so much.[319.33][319.33](applause) All right. Mr. Ellis, if you would please come up and present your fourth grade students of the month and your teacher and employee.
Staff and teacher, well, I couldn't make it today. But, a staff member of the month is Ms. Sandra Brown. Sandra Brown goes above and beyond for everyone, always has a smile on her face. Our teacher of the month is Ms. Lissandra Ballard. Ms. Ballard creates a positive classroom environment and inspires a love of learning. Our fourth grade girl of the month, Malia Chavez, she couldn't make it either. Malia is a hardworking and dedicated student who always puts forward her best effort in everything she does. All right. So, our fourth grade boy of the month, he could make it, Mr. Omarien Washington. Come on up a little bit.[383.21][383.21](applause) All right. Omarien is such a determined young man. He works hard every day and strives to be his best. He's a kind friend and a great helper. I absolutely love having Omarien in class. Omarien has shown himself to be a helpful and dedicated member of our classroom community. Each day he takes initiative by stacking chairs and helping to keep the room clean.[408.65][408.65](laughter) Always stepping up without being asked. He works hard daily and shows a great deal of determination in completing his task. I am proud of his growth, and I'm excited to see the continued progress he is making. His contributions make a positive difference in our classroom, and we are happy to celebrate him today.[427.62][427.62](applause)
And then, Mr. Prayer, are you presenting the CHS student of the month?
Thank you.
All right. So, we also have another appreciation or recognition is Mr. Donaldson. Are you going to present? UIO, Mr. Nemic?
Mr. Nemic is not here. I did not know I was presenting him, but he's awesome, and he replaced it this tournament this weekend.[480.34][480.34](laughter)
Okay. Our other one is going to be presented by Mr. Kevin Ty. Mr. Ty, would you like to come up? Mr. Ty is presenting Mr. Christopher Swanson.
Yep. So, this is Mr. Christopher Swanson. He's a computer tech for our district. He currently services the secondary campuses, so high school and junior high. His favorite thing to do is repair Chromebooks all day.[509.62][509.62](laughter) Just kidding. But, I will say, he is a fantastic team player. Anytime I ask him to do something, oftentimes what happens is he'll be working on something and be like, "Hey, I know you're doing this, but we gotta go do this now." And he doesn't complain. He just goes along with it and helps get things done. So, I want to appreciate him.[530.16][530.16](applause)
He always has a smile on his face. Ms. Ellis, do we have anybody for open forum? All right. Next item is consider approval of the consent agenda, which consists of the financial report for August of 2025, and then consider the board minutes for the special board meeting on August the 4th, 2025, special board meeting on August the 26th, 2025, and regular board meeting on August the 26th, 2025.
Questions? Make a motion.
Stephen Carter, Heather Johnson, Patty Coker, Heather Johnson, Patty Raines, Keith Black, Diane Davis, Keith Lowery.
Hi.
All voting for motion carries. Next item.
Next item is a report on only, as you know, that we have been engaged in the Texas Strategic Initiative. I was about to say, you're more than welcome to leave if you would like to after, it's up to you. You're more than welcome to stay. We love an audience for a board meeting, but I didn't want you to sit there and go, "I don't want to stay here."[647.16][647.16](laughter) The next item is a report only as far as the Texas Strategic Leadership Initiative that we have engaged in over the past year to develop our strategic plan to cover the next three to five years. As you know, we identified specific initiatives, and we actually have we-term initiative owners. So, I just wanted to invite them to just kind of give you an update of where we are because we have been through the planning process. This summer is when we actually started the implementation process, and now it's going to be a combination of the implementation and the monitoring aspect. So, would anyone like to volunteer to go first, or do you want me to just select? Ms. Tressel, why don't you go ahead and come on in?
She's a child.
She was ready.
She was ready. And so, as part of the TSL, there was a lot of work done where we took a look at all of the initiatives that we really needed to address, and behavior kept coming up throughout the surveys with all the stakeholders, whether it was teachers, parents, administrators. And so, of course, all of our administrators, they have a great plan for their campus, but one of the things that we were finding is that going from one campus to the next is that there really wasn't a lot of alignment. And so, the first thing that we did was we took a look at something that we're calling the cadet standard. And so, all the way from early childhood, you can take a look on the back, all the way from early childhood to high school, we had all of the campuses represented. And then, we came up with all of these areas where we could scaffold all the way from early childhood to high school. I'll let you take a look at just a second here. The communication, classroom, hallways, cafeteria, bathroom, arrival, dismissal, facilities, technology, and dress code, these are all pretty much non-negotiables for both the staff, the students, and even the parents. I'll let you take a look at that for just a second. is there had to be a rollout with all of the key stakeholders. So, all campuses have rolled this out, and the next thing that we're going to be doing is meeting, we have quarterly meetings that are set up, October, December, March, and then May. And then, the next thing that we are doing is determining a district systematic or, yeah, systematic framework to address behavior both in the classroom and in the hallways, that kind of thing. And so, for our tier one, basically what that means is this is for all kids. And so, behavior expectations for early childhood and the primary, those have been done for a number of years now with conscious discipline, and that's where they're actually teaching to those behavioral deficits. But, one of the things that we found was that we needed to continue that even through the elementary grades. I think we have all heard the little saying to kids, "You should know better than that. You should know by now. You're old enough to know better." But, we really don't need to approach it necessarily from that vintage point. We need to continue to teach. And so, with conscious discipline, they're teaching self-control, emotional regulation, empowering children to make decisions, teaching them to respectfully have those boundaries, assuming some positive intent from kids. They're encouraging, continuing to honor children's efforts and choices. They're teaching empathy, understanding the child's feelings, and also consequences. And so, that's one of the things that was agreed upon with all of the campuses, early childhood, primary, and elementary. And so, now, the next phase is that we're taking a look at secondary. And we're really not going to focus so much on a program, but PBIS, the Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, and approach it from a framework of an age point with the secondary schools and get some alignment with them. And then, finally, the last thing that I just wanted to touch on was that we do have a power program as far as behavior, and that serves our tier through kids. So, that's, our kids with the most challenging behaviors. And so, we're continuing to teach to those behaviors, and that does go all the way up through junior high or in the childhood through junior high. And the way we do that is we utilize monthly meetings, and we use that behavior data with the students to design and monitor a plan for each and every child, for those specific students to continue to teach to those deficits. The plans, I did want to mention, they use evidence-based practices. They may include incentive plans, check-ins, check-outs, breaks, counseling, the PALS program, social skills training, that kind of thing. So, just for numbers, early childhood at this time, there's one. Student primary, we have nine. Elementary, three. Junior high, ten. I did make a note there that each one of the campuses have had their first meeting for their students who are in this program. And some of the students who actually began at junior high had come from the early, I'm sorry, elementary, and many of these students have not had any behavioral incidents at this time today. So, we have experienced a decline in behavioral incidents from our power students served in power as a whole, as a whole group. So, then, know if you have any questions about any of this at this time.
I do know that we had two board members that joined us last week as far as for walk-throughs on the elementary campus, and then, a member joined us as well the next day as far as for visits at the primary. So, they were able to witness some of like the school culture and the team, like they had to establish how they were to transition from class to class. Where are the teachers doing, where are the students doing? And we stood out in the hallway once or twice, and then we could see exactly what they were doing to the kids. They knew, or the teacher was redirecting them on what and how, and the when and where. So, and then, whenever you go to the primary campus, it looked just a little different than that. And then, when we were at the early childhood, which they were not on that visit, you know, they even have their own games and method. Even at the junior high, like they were working really hard to teach them, "You walk on the right side of the hall." And the kids are actually doing it. Like, it's a whole, it's very much a game changer as far as the transition in between classes and so forth. Junior high campus, I just moved her, I was walking on the right side of the hall.[1147.41][1147.41](laughter) There were a few times that we were standing out there waiting for the transition, and we were in the way.
In the way.
And the kids had, they were staying on track. They were going to walk three tiles off the wall. So, anyways.
Thank you, Bill.
All right. And then, on to as far as academic experience. Dr. Hancock.
I think I was supposed to make one pager, but I may have forgotten what that said. Made a one packet, but it's highlighted, so. And it's collated some.
Move a little faster. I'll be fingers over here.
So, my two initiatives are about curriculum management and curriculum-based training. So, there's some artifacts that I just want to, and you'll see a lot of overlap between initiatives. The first two items are from our Strong Foundations Planning Grant, the work we've done with the Service Center. We have our literacy instructional framework and our mathematics framework. Both start with our vision, and then, there are four we-believe statements, one about literacy, one about math, that are based on what is called ARBs, research-based instructional strategies. So, we talk about foundational skills, text complexity, knowledge coherence, and text-based responses. In math, we talk about balance of conceptual and procedural, knowledge coherence, problem-solving, and productive struggle. And then, as stakeholders, we list out kind of the expectations for each group, students, teachers, leaders, families. And at the bottom of every single one of those is trust the process, which is the through line of everything that we're asking folks to do right now because it is, it's hard to let go of what you've always done and trusted. But, you're going to hear about the ARBs, and so, I wanted to be sure that you were at least kind of aware of what those were. On the next page, one of the first things that I needed to do was determine the instructional committee, materials review committee, so that's highlighted there for you. So, it is myself, Ms. Shulock, and then, leaders that are designated by the principal for each campus. But, these are also the list of all of the other instructional systems that we have at the district. On the next page, you'll see what we call the core instructional framework. And so, that's where we list out the district expectation by content. So, we wanted to kind of boil down the ARBs, so where it's consistent, no matter if you were in reading language arts, science, or social studies, we still want you to have productive struggle. We still want there to be knowledge coherence. We want them to still be looking at the text complexity and making sure that they're referring to the text for responses. We have written out what the written curriculum is, which is the TEES, the scope and sequence, where they get that, what their math, main instructional resources are, which you'll see blue on it. There's three across there. The initial supplemental, what has been approved to use, what our data management systems are, which is a where, and then, what assessments we use. We've also listed tier two and tier three, working from working with Ms. Shulock. And the bottom line, I just, I wanted to make this black and white so I didn't place many on color copies. So, it doesn't say down there, but nothing can be deviated from this page of our, this committee, the Instructional Materials Committee.
With the readers, I can read that, so.
On the backside, we, again, we prioritize those core instructional strategies, those ARBs that we're looking for, and then, there's roles and responsibilities by principal, AP instructional coach, and teacher leaders, how everyone supports the work of the framework. The next piece is the instructional materials adoption process. We've always had a process. It just wasn't written down because it didn't happen real frequently. But, again, we have a district level committee, and there are steps that we go through. There's a little bit difference between a core content tier one versus a tier two, three, or non-core content, but there are rubrics in place, making sure that we consult the commissioner's list and the instructional materials review approval list. So, there is that process for you. Then, when we're talking about training for instructional materials, there's the page that has some names to the side. This is from our TSL input dashboard. So, for every campus, we have, we keep this list for the HQIM, which curriculum they're using, what access they have, if they've completed the ARBs training, which isn't required yet, the curriculum product training, training on the unit a lesson, the internalization protocol. So, we have that for all the campuses there to make sure that we have everyone trained on the products. The next page is our overview of HQIM. I just kind of talked about literacy and math, types of that framework, but on the back is the part about internalization, roles and responsibilities, what district leaders are expected to do, how we go and look for evidence of internalization, we can pay back to the campus, what campus leaders are expected to do with them scheduling and protecting PLCs, observing teachers, getting feedback, what the instructional coaches do, which they internalize lesson plans ahead of time to anticipate teacher misconceptions, and then, the teacher expectations to bring that pre-work to the PLC to document where students, where they anticipate student misconceptions, and to provide support to correct those. We also have the accountability plan for those who are not internalizing. The IC notifies the principal. There's a coaching conversation, what supports can we provide to help you get back on track, and then, for other instances resulting with documentation. Also, the internalization expectations with timelines of how far in advance we expect unit a lesson internalization, what the look-for's are, that we, that HQIM is used daily for tier one, teachers not substituting, that they accurately use content-specific vocabulary and have increasing familiarity with specific routines. There's a spread routine in math at the younger grade levels where, I don't know if you remember back, I'll say when I was in school, the teacher put on an LP, and it made like four times four is, and then, for a solid minute, then you count how many you got right, and then you did it again. It's kind of like that, but without, without the record player. So, and then, the last piece is the multi-observation form that Ms. Burnett has created. One of the pages is about pretty very nicely, but it is basically the strong foundations, planning, and implementation, this portion is, of what they're looking for from the Service Center, what we'll be looking for when we go and look at digitalization. So, just that common place to collect data and to communicate that. Yes. You're not having a stroke. Any questions?
On that walkthrough, this makes a lot more sense.
Oh, good.
Yeah. All right. Any questions? Okay. Our next one, we have Ms. Shulock, and she is over our multi-tiered systems of support design. And this actually kind of falls under the academic experience as well. It's a crossover, and Dr. Hancock kind of noted that in her presentation.
So, with this particular initiative, you know, this process is a three to five year, and so, we focus really heavy on some, and this is one that we are in the implementation this year. We're not monitoring so much yet, but I wanted to kind of give you a timeline of when we're going to, and what's been done thus far. So, full implementation of this has kind of been delayed until July 26th to implement all parts of it because we're focused so much on the academic side that you just heard and the part that Ms. Burnett's going to share about. But, we have started the process, so I'm not going to read you the key actions. You can see those there, but I'm just going to talk to you about what we've done so far. So, we're looking at this system of how we do RTI under MTSS, which is also the social emotional part of it and also the paper part. So, it all goes together. That's what MTSS means. So, we're working, thus far, we've looked, or we tried to see if it would be feasible for us to do a digital system to keep all these records so everybody could see them, but it was very expensive, and so, that was not feasible for us to jump into right now given that we did do iReady, which is, does feed into the intervention of tier two and tier three academically. So, we have started researching that. We listened to several presentations. It's just the cost was pretty significant. And so, we're still researching now this year like how we can do, if we can digitize through a system that we already have, and if it would be effective, and if everyone can still see it. So, we're working on that. We've met, Dr. Hancock and I met with all of the campuses just to shore up what we're using for tier two and tier three so that can be consistent K through A, and iReady is a big piece of that. We are doing things different, different programs for tier three, but that's also research-based because a lot of times you don't do the exact thing you did in tier two for tier three to show growth. We also are, I've started to develop an MTSS RTI handbook. I have it ready pretty much. I have a draft of it, but now I need to meet with all stakeholders and see if everybody agrees that this is what we're going to follow, this is what we're going to do, this is the way we're going to move kids from tier two to tier three. So, all of that this year. So all of that this year is kind of in the works, getting all those pieces to fit together. And then also, we're updating forms so that everybody has the same forms, and I'm working to develop a step-by-step guide for the MTSS facilitator. We're kind of moving towards that language instead of saying MTSS slash RTI. It's really MTSS because RTI is under that, along with the behavior and the social emotional.
One of the things that was noticed is many a times, kids who were entered into the response to intelligence, whether it be for behavior or for the academics, but then when they would transition to the next campus, everything was in a paper folder, and sometimes it would not be complete, or maybe the folder didn't come to the same time that the kid did, so then we were starting over. So it's kind of like we're just trying to get everything streamlined. So between campuses, they know exactly what to be looking for, they know the terminology because the intervention that they will be using at the ECC will be the same as what they're using at the primary school, and primary school going to elementary, because before it was kind of mismatched, they would do one thing at one campus and something else at another. But this way, the goal is to see the students progressing, grow throughout their educational career here at Conley, and that in between campuses, they know exactly what to look for and expect whenever they have questions about a student. So we did look at electronic platforms, yes, they are very expensive, so we decided to put our focus on just getting the system aligned first, and then we'll address the documentation and the tracking aspect of it. So for right now, they'll still be using like either a Google Sheet or Form or what have you, or we'll have another place that we can store it so that it's not necessarily always in that physical paper form where if something happens and it's gone. But we are investigating and experimenting, I guess, with different avenues to do that.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, so, moving on, then I'll have Ms. Burnett come up here, and hers is kind of a crossover as well with the academic experience, because she is the instructional capacity building, so she'll share a little bit more about the progress and what they have done there.
So I have four different TSL initiatives, but they all go hand-in-hand with each other, and then also with some of the work that the other ones are doing. So the first portion is Tier One instructional strategies and supports for all learners. This has been done in collaboration with Dr. Hancock. We have created, we published the Tier One core instructional framework that she gave you a copy of. We, I created the common walkthrough tool that aligns with that framework, so that when we're going into the classrooms, we're checking for the things in that framework. And then we've defined and explained the roles and responsibilities of instructional leaders. The next step for this initiative is to review that walkthrough data and see if the framework is functioning as prescribed, or whether we need to make adjustments. The next portion, culture and behavior training, so this was completed in collaboration with Ms. Tressel in her initiative. It established expectations for cultures and behavior district-wide, and then we communicate those expectations to campus staff through PD. So another part of this is, under the TIL work, we did the school cultures and routines training, and so all of the campus principals and APs have been trained in that initiative, even high school, that hadn't been included in that before, so that we can make this truly a district-wide initiative. And once again, we need to review that data just as we go throughout the year and make any adjustments as needed. I will say that that work on the campuses, I mean, it shows, like Ms. Ballberg was saying, you, it's a completely different culture when you walk into the junior high at lunchtime than it was last year. And I believe it's through some of this work that those administrators are involved in. The third initiative, instructional delivery training, so we've trained all of our leaders in data-driven instruction and observation, feedback processes, and expectations. So all of this has just kind of gotten rolling. I think we've taken three or four unit assessments district-wide at this point, but at each unit assessment, the teachers and the leaders will sit down and dig through that data to identify the gaps and then prescribe an intervention for that. The observation feedback, all of the teachers have been tiered by performance, but we haven't started having those formal coaching meetings yet. And so all of that will roll out in the next couple of weeks, once we get through tomorrow, but they have been tiered, and so that's what this work entails. We have also, I provide PD for the new teachers, so we had a new baby teacher boot camp this year during new staff development. So anyone who had never taught before got to have just a welcome-to-teaching training with myself and Ms. Cantona and Ms. Jones. And then we also have calendared all the assessments and the PLCs and set expectations for meeting times. So the teachers don't just have that PLC time, they have requirements and a list of exactly what's getting accomplished, and then we document that, and we keep all of that as an artifact. And then instructional planning and supports. We worked on the master schedules and made sure that that extra planning time was built in for the teachers, especially with the added burden of the internalization of those blue-wonnet lessons, since that's so new. We have planned intervention and calendared exactly when that will happen, and then we have, once again, calendar assessments and set expectations for those meetings. If you'll turn onto the back of the handout, this is just a tally, and I think that it's the most important factor in some of the success we've seen over the past few weeks is the number of classroom observations. So whether it was through that multi-observation tool that I created, or we create another district admin kind of walkthrough tool that was a little bit simpler, we had 187 total classroom visits in August, and I broke that up by instructional coaches, APs, principals, and district admin. And then in September, just until Friday, which Ms. Ballberg said she had 25 more to enter in over the weekend that she didn't get to, but we had 306 visits. And so our teachers and students are very used to us walking into the classroom, which I know Ms. Johnson and Ms. Coker couldn't attest to because they saw some of, you know, the kids aren't, they're not surprised. One of them did ask if we were multiplying when we walked in there, you know, and, but they're not surprised, and that, you know, that was the whole purpose for it. I know Dr. Hancock's doing walks, we've all been divided up to different grade levels to just kind of, to do walks. And I think the more eyes out there and the more that we have just the sense that we're all of us together, because we truly are. I mean, I don't know how many school districts where you see the assistant superintendent of, you know, finance, walking in to observe a social studies class, but here, for the past couple of months, we have, and I think that's really made a huge difference. So 180 of those visits in September so far have been by district admin, and some of that was getting used to tomorrow, just to make sure our kids knew that 10 people walking in at one time is a normal thing at Conley ISD. And then taken from those observations, because just observing is not enough, you know, gathering the data doesn't mean anything if we don't take this and create an action step afterwards. So the student engagement that was measured, and this is the first month of school, 72% of students were observed as being engaged, and then we had 83.6% of students meeting classroom behavior expectations on those survey results. And so we will just keep at it and adjust where needed, and just take every day, one step at a time, and keep it going. Do you have any questions for these?
I will say she kind of covered the next agenda item.
Sorry.
As well, as far as the tap accountability aspect. But we also have, under our student experience, is Mr. Donaldson with the communication aspect.
I actually placed my hand out longer station, which I'm not here, I'm just saying that it does not make up for the fact that it's by far the ugliest one, but I will try to spice it up. The initiative that I am spearheading has to do with family engagement, and I've worked with Ms. Shulock on that and some of her title programs. My end is very much the kind of clerical side of things, which is just making sure that our parents can get engaged with communication, are aware of what's going on in the district, and have a clear pathway to be able to contact their teachers and administrators. So as you all know, we switched over from AppSheep over to Parentsware, and that process, while it was stressful and a bill of love to it, the rollout has been incredibly smooth. We've had a couple of pickups, and I've been able to catch them, and with the help of Mr. Tai and the Lifelines at Parentsware HQ, we've been able to fix them all. Now we're able to get them. There are some ghost issues that come up, but we solved them pretty quickly, and they now recognize me by name whenever they see me calling over there, so that's really good. The sync happens between Skyward every single night, 99% of our parent data is going over correctly every single night. The 1% that is not is because the parents have inputted the wrong data into Skyward. So it's things like, these are phone numbers that are not complete, or emails that don't have the app symbol or anything like that. So that makes up actually only 18 individual parents within our district that are not getting into that sync. 98% of our parents have a phone number that's listed in Skyward, and 80% of them have an email. What's really great about that is that if a parent has not downloaded Parentsware, as long as we have contact information in Skyward, they are still getting a notification, okay? So if it is a mass alert for something like Shepherd's Heart, if it is a notification like we sent out a flyover, or even, and I called before this meeting to confirm, even if it is a direct message from a parent specific to their child, they will still get a text and email notification that says, someone is trying to get ahold of you, you should log into Parentsware and check this out. Fortunately, 39% of our parents throughout the district have fully registered their Parentsware account and downloaded the app. So that is a much higher rate than we saw with the former platform that we were using. That also means that we have about 40% of our parents that are actively engaging with it. Even if they don't have it, they can still get the notifications, but we're encouraging everybody to go ahead and download the app because they can get all of the bells and whistles, which are great. Of our parents that have the app, 35% of them are asking to get their notifications exclusively through it, 22% of them are asking for a text message to go to them, and 79% of them are asking for emails. Parents can also customize, can customize if they get that notification at the end of the workday, all at once in a summary, or if it comes to them immediately. And in worst-case scenarios, I have the ability to override any of their settings and make sure that everybody gets it right whenever I send it. If a parent wants to be added to Parentsware, which we've had a couple of people that have said, well, I need to be added to my kid's account, that just means that they're not listed as a family contact, they're probably listed as an emergency contact. All they have to do is contact their campus, we get it fixed immediately, and then they automatically sync within the next 24 hours. We are getting them added as quickly as we can. We also have Students' Square available for our students in grades six through 12. This is something that we did not have with AppSheep, they don't even offer it. This gives our students the exact same accessibility that the parents have, but it's just a student-to-teacher contact pathway that we can use. We advertise this as it's going to transition out of Remind 101, GroupMe, ClassOjo, all of those things, parents and students can both use it. And at the high school level, we've already implemented it, and I really want to give a shout-out to the athletic department, to the theater department, to Dr. Rose being in the band, because they are already using it in the high school level to communicate with their students, and it's been really, really effective. I was with Ms. Hammett, and we took some kids to a debate tournament this weekend, we added them to a group text, and it was all through Parentsware, all documented, and it worked 100% badly, so it was really good. Had a couple of issues with the data initially with it, it was logging up in Skyward, but that has been fixed as of last week, so there should be no concerns with our students from this point on. We also are transitioning our website, over to Parentsware-funded and operated website. It is deeply intimidating in comparison to its predecessor, because all of those bells and whistles are going off when you log into the backend of it, and there's a lot of really cool stuff we can do on that website that I have no idea how to work with yet. So I joked with Ms. Ballberg that everything is now 100% functional, with the exception of our elementary directory not having photos, but it's going to be cool and pretty by Halloween. Okay, so just kind of giving you a little bit of time, all of our required postings are up, all of the, everything else is good to go. The document cleanup is ongoing because they transferred over every single document that we had ever posted on the old website, so there was several thousand of them that I'm having to manually go through and click on one by one. But I am appreciative of Ms. Ls and Mr. Tunes, who just today were sending stuff because I was like, it'll be easier to just delete and start over, and that is what we did. Once everything's been cleaned, we'll be able to experiment with that. So the next steps coming out of my office and in alignment with this TSL initiative are building community groups within Parentsware for individual notifications. This would be for the board members, our senior citizens, and any other community members that wants to be added. There's a way to do it, not quite sure what's going to be the cleanest place, so I have not forgotten about that, that is the next immediate task on the to-do list. We're also going to be making the website a little more interactive so that it can be a little more appealing to use, as opposed to just the bare bones. We are going to share edit access of the website to our principals and individual staff members so they can maintain it. Again, it's very intimidating, and I don't want to let them loose because they could cause some damage without intending to. And then I also intend to be bringing back our feature stories that we had a couple of years ago, do some writings, working with our high school journalism team to really get them involved in that, they're chomping at the bit. I'm going to try to find ways that we can feature our staff and students and family members within our community and do some shout-outs. I'm going to do some ways to include video stories on, which I know nothing about, but luckily I have a best friend that's in the film industry, so I'm going to learn how to do it. And the other thing that I did not put on here, but one of the things that's recommended in the Communication Pros groups that I'm in, is basically to reintroduce myself to the community, so here, within a week or so, I will post each of the community Facebook pages, they get to know this guy that's sharing a flyover every week. By the way, he lives in your neighborhood and has for 30 years, so like you should really get to know him. And that way, they have a point of contact that they can come through whenever they have a question, a concern, or a complaint. I do want to give a really quick shout-out, though, we have some staff, all of our staff members have at least gone through the setup of the account, they've all done the bare minimum for sure, that's the expectation, but we have some of our staff members that are just absolutely killing it with communication. I did not do a super deep dive into this, so full transparency, the names that we have listed on this document are literally just the most active people that we have in the district utilizing Parentsware right now. I've been really impressed with that, so I wanted to give a shout-out to Taylor White at ECC, Cameron James at CPS, Ms. Bowling over at ECC, and Coach Garrick at the high school, because they are our top users of Parentsware, both in terms of posting to the campus, their classroom level, and sending direct messages to parents. I also want to give a shout-out to Ms. Waters at the primary school. She called me with a question that she was having to work on, we were able to backboard and look into it, so she was really inquisitive of seeing what the features would allow us to do the best service to our parents and our students, and it really has shown that this platform's going to help us out. So that's what I've got, we're going to keep engaging with our parents, and I think it's going to pay off in the long run.
And I will say, every campus has set an expectation for their teachers as far as how many contacts they're requiring, that they have to make a minimum of X contacts as far as during a week. Well, starting last week, now they will automatically get a report from Parentsware of who, you know, made contact, and how many, was it a public, was it a private, like direct contact to a parent. We also had, where we had to get the consent for Senate Bill 12 out, Mr. Donaldson was able to send that out, the form was available right there in Parentsware, as long as they had the app downloaded, they could complete it, we got record of it, we could share that with the nurses of who all had it. Of course, then it all changed three days later from the state, so now we're working on another one specifically for counseling aspect of it. But it was very nice, and we are entering into the time where teachers will be setting up parent conferences, and Mr. Donaldson shared out with them, okay, this is how you can set it up so that your parents can go ahead and sign up for their parent conference time slot, you know, on your designated day. So it has a lot of really good features, but it's kind of, we're taking one step at a time as to not overwhelm Mr. Donaldson and everybody else, but eventually we'll get to the point where they can, for a tee-shirt, or a field trip, or something of that nature through the Parentsware app.
And eventually, we'll be able to have outside people that don't have kids, maybe alumni that can get in there, see what's going on.
That's actually the top that I've got right now. I have to call them to see, because we want to make sure they can get the notifications and the information and interact, but that they don't have the same access that, say, a parent would.
Yeah, because you know, one of the things, going back to the moment, you know, people are, oh, this is the only time, we know this is the only time we hear.
Yes, no, we want to create that group that they can customize. Yes, sir.
And we have a database of, like, whenever we've done the senior citizen lunches, that they fill out a form if they want to be in contact. Whenever we transitioned over to the Parentsware, and I was told by some senior citizens in our community, I'm no longer getting the newsletter, why am I not getting the number? Michael, you need to make sure that we get this. But it was just a matter of, we already had that list created in AppToG, so now it was just uploading that list as far as, you know, into smores to get it, and the next step will be at the mall there as well. It's been very successful up to this point, and very few complaints as far as with it. Any other questions about any of the TSL?
Thank y'all.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, our next one, I don't know, Ms. Burnett, did you have anything to add as far as the tap accountability? You kind of covered it on the back page with your updates.
And so I think that it all goes hand-in-hand, and y'all got your accountability update last week. Next month, we should have more data and some more details on the tap plan and just our progress.
All right, next item on the agenda is Consider Impossible Action to Approve Updated List of T-Test Appraisers. This was actually presented to you in August, I believe, of who our T-Test Appraisers were. Well, since then, we have had a few Well, since then, we have had a few additional who have either updated their T-Test certification or that they have completed their T-Test certification. We can't officially add them to the list until we have a valid certificate on file. So, this month, we would like to add T-Test Appraisers Elizabeth Burnett, Leanne Ermas. She is, or Leanne Wilson, she's over at the Early Childhood Campus. And Bethany Beesler at the Primary Campus.
Inter motion. So.
Stephen Carter motion, Keith Lowry second to.
No, Keith Lowry made the motion, Heather seconded. He said he needed a motion.
Oh, okay, sorry. Keith Lowry motion, Heather Johnson second to approve the updated list of the T-Test Appraisers.
Motion to go for any further discussion? Hearing on, Stephen Carter, aye. Kathy Coker.
Aye.
Heather Johnston.
Aye.
Danny Rains.
Keith Black.
Diane Davis is absent, Keith Lowry. Any opposed, same sign? All voting for, motion carries. Oh, right to my end. Come on, next item.
Our next item is Consider Impossible Action to Approve the Proposed September 2025 Budget Amendment.
Mr. Timmons.
So, this budget amendment is entirely related to the roofing projects. I know we talked about it during the budget adoption meeting or one of the workshops, that this wasn't going to be factored in until we kind of knew a little bit more of what costs were going to be incurred by the district. And so, we've actually got some good news, thankfully. We had a meeting with, between Armco and the two roofing contractors that we had selected back in June. And the, I was doing classroom walkthroughs. I told Jeremy, the only question I have is, how much is the insurance company going to pick up? The insurance company is going to pick up the remaining costs of any of the projects and possibly even the Armco contract that we had signed with them way back in the spring. So, those two projects are expected to cost $1,545,367. So, the insurance company would cut us a check, except that they had previously paid us minus the deductible of $427,534. I did verify the only amount they will take out of the remaining is that $427,000. And so, we, when this is all completed, are expecting a check from the insurance company So, this budget amendment just reflects those two things. The increased revenue from the insurance payout and then the expenditure that I will be putting into function 81, which is capital outlay, facilities and acquisition. It will just increase both, both parts of the budget so that we show that this has come in. The only other thing I wanted to mention is that specifically down in the weeds, we actually created a new expense code so that we can show that this is an insurance payout, that funds are not coming from anything else. And these roof projects are related specifically to the insurance payout. Not related to anything else that we're doing, not related to any debt service and calendar or anything like that.
Do you have that code?
Typically, in the board meetings, you only approve up to the function so that we don't have to come back to the table every time I need to move one little thing around, so. But if there's no further discussion, our recommendation is please approve the September 2025 budget.
I make a motion.
Stephen Carter motion, Heather Johnson second to approve the proposed September 2025 idea.
Motion to go for any further discussion? Stephen Carter, aye. Kathy Coker.
Aye.
Heather Johnston. Danny Rains. Keith Black. Diane Davis is absent, Keith Lowry. All voting for, motion carries. Next item.
Next item is Consider Impossible Action to Approve the Atmos Energy Corporation's Proposed Pipeline Easement.
We also talked to y'all back in the spring about Atmos planning to do some pipeline work, moving some things around. They have requested an easement from us. And so, I will just bounce around to the main high point. It's a fairly boilerplate agreement there. If you want to re, we certainly can. But it is essentially, they need .0238 of an acre, which is coming off of Teresa Drive. It's literally just 10 feet off of, if you know where the old admin building was. And there's the little section of road that looks like there's a fence that cuts it off, 10 feet off of that curb of the house. That's, that's what they're asking for easement for. And they're willing to pay you $1,500 for the right to use those 10 feet.
No, no, they're not going to use it. They're going to dig through it and cover it right back up, put it back to the same.
And then this is just a perpetual easement so that they can access the pipeline that would run through there?
So, just because of where we were, obviously I went through this and we were in a tax attorney meeting and I just, hey, tell me kind of what. And I told him what the figure was and he was like, that seems off a load of me. So, I don't know who established these numbers, but.
This is all from them?
That's what I figured, sure. So, I don't know if there's a calculation. It's just property values are very expensive. And if we said .0238 of my property, probably would be way more than $1,500. So, I don't know that, I don't want to stop this because they need this, but it just seems like a very low.
Well, it says it's not, it's not based on appraisal reports and they are open to negotiation. I'll also say on the agreement, the opening line says $10.
That, I believe that piece, yeah, I'm not sure. I just know that on the opening letter, it says.
It says $1,500, yes.
All $1,500.
Correct.
Yeah. The total square footage of what they're asking is, I believe it said 1,035.
It gets somewhere in there.
So.
But it didn't give a very good, I mean, it gave the explanation of Teresa, but I just kind of assumed where it was based on knowing where Teresa is. But I wish they would have drawn a map in there that said, this is the area.
We can certainly kick it back and ask questions, you know, like it says, it's.
Are they digging in the area already? Need access?
Not to my knowledge, no. There, there are no, there's nothing happening until they get this.
Well, I understand on our property.
Right.
Others established, so they already digging in Lakeview somewhere. I would like to kick it back then and just say, just give us your best offer. Seems very low.
Okay.
So. I'm going to make a motion to postpone indefinitely the Atmos Energy Corporation Proposed Pipeline Easement, which allows us to come back at any time and revisit this.
Second.
Is that Keith?
Yeah.
Stephen Carter motion, Keith Lowry second to postpone indefinitely the Atmos Energy Corporation Proposed Pipeline Easement.
Motion to go for any further discussion? Hearing on, all voting for, so Stephen Carter, aye. Kathy Coker. Heather Johnston.
Aye.
Danny Rains. Keith Black. Diane Davis is absent, Keith Lowry. Motion carries, all voting for. Next item.
All voting to postpone.
To postpone indefinitely.
Yes, yes. All right, next item is Superintendent's report. Mine is just like rather brief, just touching base a little bit as far as on our enrollment currently. So, right now, our ADA, after last week, we were at 96.2%, which that's a great celebration. However, due to the decline in our enrollment, that means that as of right now with that 96%, we will be funded on 1,912 students. Our budget is built on 1,920 students. So, we're eight students short. So, if we can get that to like a 97%, it would be fabulous. That is just one of those things when you are unsure of what your enrollment is going to be. We've done from the very beginning that our enrollment that we were, we were lagging behind a bit. But I will say, I think that the principals have all done a phenomenal job of getting the kids here, even the attendance on Friday when it was a half-day last week. I mean, at the high school, they had 94% of their kids who were in attendance. So, they are working very hard. The kids are here, they're coming. And I mean, it's, it's been a great, a great start as far as from that aspect. Other reports, if you did not have an opportunity, we actually have a star in our presence, Mr. Demetrius Ellis, wrapped up his, his acting. It sounded like from before the prior to the board meeting that he closed out his acting career since he says the first hand is last for the. But it was a great performance. I know I was there last Thursday night along with a couple of other people from the district and he did a great job and made Conley very proud. Ms. Burnett covered that we have been doing several classroom walkthroughs. I think some of the people were very scared in the beginning. I think now it's just kind of the norm and it's not a huge issue to have us coming in the classrooms. We did have a conversation this morning, just having a discussion as far as about, now we just kind of need to spread the wealth because we've really been focused on the RLA and on the map. We are going to start visiting some of our other science, social studies. We have not been in a, in a mass visit as far as to the high school yet, but that is on our agenda as well. We meet every Monday at 8:30 as far as central administration, just kind of discuss trends that we've seen. We discuss any of the data that had been collected in the prior week. Of course, we don't have any end-of-unit tests right now, so we've been making that mid-module tests and so forth like that. But then after that, we kind of divide and conquer. And then each one of us are doing a minimum of three walkthroughs on a campus just depending on what we've seen or where they would like to have another eyes, another set of eyes, you know, on a specific area. So, we are all engaged in that. It was pointed out, I mean, it's great for HR to see what's going on in the classroom. It's great as far as for Mr. Timmons to even see where the money is being spent or how it's being utilized. You know, Ms. Shulock gets first eyes on all the RTI and so forth like that. So, I think it's been very beneficial as far as to even us as at the central admin to know what is going on. So, that is all I have. Our next item would be to set our date time for the October regulars word meeting. So, I have it as potential for October the 13th at 6:30 for October the 20th. So, looking at it in that manner, October the 13th is actually the second Monday of the month. October the 20th does end up being your third Monday of the month.
And that's also a holiday.
Yeah, the 13th is Columbus Day.
You want 20th?
You want.
20th, let's do the 20th. This board will now adjourn into executive session pursuant to the following section of Texas hoping to use Act 551.082, 551.075, 551.074. Pat, 7:34.
Ready.
Coming out at 8:48, I need a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
Motion, second of the floor, any further discussion?
Oh, we're going to do these higher.
Oh, there's none of the, with it.
Yeah, those are.
Hearing on, all voting for Stephen Carter, aye. Kathy Coker.
Aye.
Heather Johnston-McCarthy.
Aye.
Danny Rains. Keith Black.
Aye.
Diane Davis is absent, Keith Lowry.
Aye.
All voting for, motion carries, we adjourn at 8:49. Thank y'all. Stephen says that.